All right, thank you very much. For our recorded audience and our live audience, this is a July 20, uh, July 8th, 2020 CDB Edina Planning Commission meeting. Uh, we're meeting by, uh, electronic video conference as I think we're all, we've all gotten used to over the last few months, believe it or not, to comply with the governor's stay-at-home order and just general, uh, public safety issues. Uh, all members of the planning commission, all staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. Tonight's meeting includes three public hearings, uh, sign variances to allow two building signs, one of 100 square feet and one of 87 square feet at Our Lady of Grace, which is at 5051 Eden Avenue. A second is zoning ordinance amendment to be considered to allow taprooms, wineries, distilleries, and cocktail rooms in the POD dash two district, that's Planned Office District Two zoning area. And then third is a conditional use permit with variances for 4425 Valley View Road. Uh, I think we're still waiting a moment to have our call-in setup available, but we can continue with a few things. Um, we are, you know, even though we're in this different format, as we all are getting used to, we're, we're trying hard to try out any way of getting feedback from the public that we can, although we do not have feedback in person tonight, there's opportunities for people to call in. Uh, we've also, the city has been, uh, using the Better Together website for several months now, and that's getting quite effective. Yeah, and people can also use the, the city on, there's an online opportunity to give comments or to leave voice messages for the city that people can check out, check with the planning department for that. And, uh, all those things work. The, the Edina website may give that is bettertogetheredina.org if people want to check that out and use it in the future. Uh, everything that, everything that's been submitted, we've looked at, we thank you for that. Again, there'll be another opportunity later if you want to give a comment that hasn't been received already. Um, if you want to give testimony for the public hearing, dial 1-800-374-0221 with conference ID 6037966. You will have three minutes to speak. Uh, staff will time the speakers and give you a warning at 30 seconds ago and when your three minutes are over. Um, note, you know, unlike in-person meetings, we are not doing community comment. Community comment is an opportunity for people, members of the public, to speak about a matter not on our agenda. That is not part of the online meetings that we're holding. If you have comments you'd like to give to the planning commission, uh, for other matters, you know, use one of the other methods described earlier. Um, thank you. Thanks to everyone who's participating, everyone who's watching and listening for your patience while we use this new system. Uh, I think we've worked out some of the bugs, but we continue to have some bugs. It's, it's just, there's a lot more complication, I think, as we've all experienced in our lives, uh, with, with online meetings. So, with that, uh, Jennifer, is the, uh, call-in function ready?
Yes, they're there now, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, maybe we could, uh, just call the meeting to order and if that's the case, uh, if, if staff member Olson, if you could do a roll vote, a roll call, that would be great.
Certainly. Commissioner Agnew?
Here.
Commissioner Barubi?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda? Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Thorson?
Thorson.
Chair Nemirov?
Here, thank you. The, the next item is to approve the meeting agenda. Everyone's received it. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval, the agenda as submitted.
I'll second that.
Uh, Liz, could you do a roll vote for that?
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye.
Then the fourth item on our order tonight is to approve the meeting minutes from June 10th. We did not have a meeting on June 24th. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Does anyone have any comments to them? Would anyone like to make a motion? I'm looking up to the top left here.
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
And I'll second those.
Liz, could you do a roll vote of that, please?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. Well, thank you, everyone. That takes us, it's now 7:09, we can start our public hearings. The first one is a public hearing for sign variances for two building signs, one 100 square feet and one 87 square feet at Our Lady of Grace 5051 Eden Avenue. And it looks like presenting for staff is Emily Botticker. Emily, welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be back. So, here we go. Okay, can you all see my PowerPoint now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so tonight, the applicant, Our Lady of Grace, is requesting sign variances for multiple signs at 5051 Eden Avenue. The subject property is located on the west side of Highway 100, south of Eden Avenue. The applicant is asking for two different sign variances, one variance for the number of wall signs, and the other variance for the number of proposed, or for the size of the proposed wall signs. Both proposed signs are located on the north elevation of the building. Um, schools and churches that are located in R1 zoning districts are allowed 124 square foot wall sign. Um, the first proposed wall sign is shown on building location A, and it is 100 square foot sign located in the northeast corner of the building. Um, the second proposed wall sign is located, is an 87 square foot sign located on the northwest corner of the building over an entryway. And, um, Our Lady of Grace, as you may have remembered, received a conditional use permit with variances in 2019, the expansion of the religious use at the subject property. The elevations show, um, the new, new elevations of the building. Um, their request in 2019 included a sign variance for 100 square foot sign, and at that time, they kind of just, the applicant just showed a 100 square foot box where the sign would be located. Um, city council had asked that at the, at the time, um, that asked when the signs were designed, that they come back and ask for a sign variance with specifics on the, on design of the sign. So, staff believes that the requested sign variances are justified. The signs are located on the north elevation towards the commercial area and Highway 100. It will not be visible from the single-family homes to, that are located to the south. Although the location of the church and school is within residentially zoned property, the site itself allows for signage that would typically be seen in more of a commercially zoned area due to its size and location. Um, the size of the signs are reasonable given the size of the structure on which they would be located. Oftentimes, churches are located completely immersed within single-family neighborhoods. Our Lady of Grace acts as a transition between the neighborhoods to the south and the commercial areas to the north, and then Highway 100 to the east. The location of the proposed signs will have limited impact to the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Therefore, tonight, um, staff's recommendation is to approve the requested variances to allow one 100 square foot wall sign and one 87 square foot wall sign on the north elevation of Our Lady of Grace at 5051 Eden Avenue, based on the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant is also on the call.
Thanks, Emily. Does, do any members of the planning commission have questions for staff? Carrie?
Uh, yeah, um, Emily, the signs we're talking about are both, uh, surface-mounted on the building, correct?
Yes, they're in, I believe it's pre-cas.
Okay, okay. And they're, they're, they're not illuminated, right? I, I assume there may be some light shown on them, but the signs themselves are carved or, or whatever, stonework and, but, but not electric, right?
Yes, that's what's shown, and that's my understanding. The applicant might have, um, some insight on if there's any plans to illuminate any of the signage.
Okay. So, the, I mean, the issue is just the, the square footage, really, of?
The square footage of all signs and the fact that there's two, two walls.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions for staff?
I have a quick question. Nope, have at it, okay. So, uh, are we approving the size of the signs or the actual signs themselves?
The, um, condition on the staff report is subject to the plans presented.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Emily. Would the applicant like to say anything about the, this proposal?
Yes. Hello, my name is Jay Fournier with the Opus Group, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, so I'm with Opus AE Group at 1035 Zero Brent Road West. I just want to say thank you to the chair and commissioners for having us here, and obviously city staff for helping us shepherd through this. Uh, the last time we were in front of you, as Emily noted, we were requesting the CUP with a handful of variances in notes, and this is one item that was left outstanding from that previous conversation. Um, we're happy to report that fundraising has gone very, very well for Our Lady of Grace and their community, and we're anticipating, even in light of all the circumstances going on in the world today, um, a hope to still break ground by the end of this year, so there is an update from that standpoint. So, we're very excited to bring these signs in front of you now that there is an actual sign design. Um, as Emily touched on, I do have some pressure. We intend to light these signs from the, so they'll not be illuminated from within. They are carved signs, and the intention here is that they are a part of the architecture and really ingrained into the building, so these are not applied signs. These are long-lasting, permanent applications that are built into the wall systems themselves. So, like the building itself, we're here for a generational building. This is something to be taken down in 20 years. The signs that goes along with it is very important, and that would also be a long-lasting solution as well. So, we look forward to answering any comments you might have, and, um, hopefully, we look forward to getting approval for our variance. Thank you for your time.
Fournier, do, do any members of the planning commission have questions for the applicant? I have one. Is, is there an existing sign at OLG on the property?
Yes, uh, there is a monument sign, if you're familiar with the site. There's a mound that, between the parking lot and Highway 100 that faces the east. Um, so that monument sign was installed quite some time ago, um, I think about 2010. The, the one comment there and why we're looking for additional signage on the building itself, since Highway 100's been improved, there's a median barrier that's been increased in height, and that sign is not as visible as it once was. And this provides a little bit more visibility with the prominence of the building being forward on the property closer to Highway 100.
Okay, thank you. And does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Okay, please.
Um, so the, uh, uh, looking at the diagrams, it says, uh, for the north elevation and the northeast perspective, it says not to scale. What's not to scale about that?
Let me.
Why, why wouldn't it be to scale? Which drawing are you looking at, sorry? Um, building signage location, well, actually, the one below it, it says entry perspective. This is on page, uh, four and five, I believe, is it?
Sure. So, on a perspective image like that, um, you can't really do it to scale because the foreground is closer to the camera than the background. So, the drawing above it, which is the true two-dimensional orthogonal elevation, that is actually to scale, so you could take a ruler on the paper copy and measure it in that manner.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's, it's proportionally to scale, it's just that, if on a piece of paper, you couldn't take a measurement on it and tell you how big it was.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do, does, do any commissioners have further questions for the applicant? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, um, so members of the public can call in and give their feedback. Uh, I will note that we received one voicemail, I believe, about this, uh, before the meeting, and it was basically just positive, it was a neighbor. Um, if you do want to call in, you have up to three minutes to speak. We ask that you, uh, try not to duplicate something that somebody else already said. Uh, we'll, we'll try to give you a notice that, uh, when you have 30 seconds left and when your time is up. If you'd like to call in, you call 1-800- Hold on. I, I saw something on CNBC today that was worse than that, but anyways, if you want to call in, call 1-800-1-800-374-0221, conference ID 6037966, press pound, excuse me, star one. Uh, if the lines are busy, just call back in a moment. No, wait a moment for the delay in calls.
Chair Nemirov, members of the commission, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. I'm helping to moderate, um, the call-in feature of tonight's meeting. Um, we do not currently have any callers on the line. Um, just to correct, um, a little something, you won't get a busy signal when you call in, um, but you, you do have to get into a queue. I would recommend, before you move on, even though we don't have anyone on the call right now, because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, um, please wait a minute or so before, um, moving on, on to take action in this matter.
Jennifer. Well, I knew we'd have some issue come up on, uh, video conferencing.
Dear members of the commission, I think it's safe for you to move on with your discussion now.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, could we get a, an ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, Liz, could you do a roll vote on that, please?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. So, that, uh, thank you. So, that brings us to a planning commission discussion. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to share, or thoughts, or further questions?
I'm, I'll make a comment. You know, um, they're asking for four times the size that would normally be allowed, but I think that staff made a really good case for, um, approval of these variances, um, both the size of the signs as well as having two rather than just one, um, given the size of the lot and the consequent size of the building. Um, the signs fit, um, scale-wise, you know, it's, they're appropriate, they don't look oversized on the building. Um, and no residences face these signs, they're faced either on the north or on the east side at Highway 100. Um, and for me, those are two big factors. Um, and I think that, that, the style of the, you know, that the size is appropriate for the building, the, the size looks fine, um, and I appreciate that they're illuminated from the ground. Um, so I have, I, I would have no problem with this, approving this.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I, I just had a couple, I mean, I agree with Sheila, I like, I, I think location really makes a, a big difference on this one, facing the parking lot, which is then facing a ball field, uh, not facing red, a neighborhood. Uh, also, you just, as I say, I thought the school sign in particular was, was, was kind of cool. I mean, I, I thought it was, it was kind of a, almost an, again, addition to the way the bill, the appearance of the building. So, I mean, I, I think these are good. Does anyone else have any further comments or questions?
I have a quick comment.
Okay, Lou.
Just, uh, yeah, echoing what, what Chair Nemirov and, and Commissioner Barubi said, um, but I think we need to consider, um, that, you know, the, the city owns property across the street, and there's big questions about how that's going to be redeveloped. I would guess there's probably going to be residential housing there too, but as Commissioner Barubi said, you know, the, the size and distance of the church buildings compared to, to the nearest street there, I think is sufficiently far, that the perceived size of these signs is actually pretty small. So, regardless of whether there's, you know, a bunch of people living in the building there, um, I don't think it would really affect them much in any way, so, so I'm for this too.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments, questions, or even a motion?
I move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions, findings outlined in the staff memo.
Okay, we have, uh, Commissioner Thorson moved approval, Commissioner Agnew was second. Uh, Liz, could you do a roll vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. Well, thank you. So, it's, it's, we've, we've done it, and good luck. I, I believe this goes to the city council in a few weeks, and, uh, good luck. Thank you. Uh, the, this, the second item, the second public hearing on our agenda tonight is, uh, a zoning ordinance amendment for us to consider, to allow taprooms, wineries, distilleries, and cocktail rooms in the POD dash two zoning area, Planned Office District Two. And, uh, presenting for the sta, for the city will be Community Development Director Carrie Teague.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, members of the commission, can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay. So, as mentioned, this is a zoning ordinance amendment that would allow these types of uses in the Planned Office District. Um, the purpose of this request by the applicant is they would like to locate a distillery in the Cahill Industrial Park at 7201 Metro Boulevard. That is the former Regis Office Campus, and that is located on Highway 100 and Metro Boulevard, if you can see my cursor, right in this area here. Uh, so, to, most of the commission, I believe, was on the planning commission when you all made a recommendation to allow these uses within the planned industrial district, the PID district. Um, those districts on this map are highlighted in yellow, so it's, I'll point them out here quickly. On Highway 169, that runs north, south, and the far west side of the zoning map, there's a couple of office and light industrial uses here, just north of this purple area is the Loden Apartments that were recently built. There's also on the west side of 169, there's a series of light industrial and office uses here, they would be allowed in that area. Also, the 70th and Cahill, or the Cahill Industrial Park, uh, which is south of 70th Street, west of Highway 100, north of 494, east of Cahill Road, so all the yellow area there. Also Pentagon Park, as it extends toward, uh, France Avenue, this is 76th Street here. So, all the uses that we're talking about here were allowed and approved as part of that zoning ordinance that the city council adopted in 2016. Well, before I go on, um, since that time, we've had one, uh, taproom open up in the city, and that's located in the Cahill Industrial Park. That's the Wooden Hill Brewery, and that's located west of the Public Works, uh, in this area here. Some of the concerns that were talked about, um, were in regard to noise or odor, police calls. We haven't had any issues in, or parking, um, along with that use, um, so it has operated well under the existing ordinance. So, the ordinance before you would expand just to the Planned Office District Two area, um, or, uh, properties that are zoned, Planned Office District Two. They're all located adjacent to the industrial parks, so to those yellow areas. Down on the south west corner of town, this is the Alina Medical Facility here, they would be allowed there. The properties located on the west side of Highway 100, again, adjacent to the industrial park, these properties here, it's difficult to see on the map, but they're kind of this orange, hatched properties. The solid orange would not apply, that's the Planned Office District One. We do have Planned Office District One in some of our neighborhood nodes, uh, 44th and France, um, then the Grandview District. These uses would not be allowed in those districts, only the POD Two. There's also one additional site just east of Pentagon Park on 76th Street, there's an office building right here that holds that Planned Office District designation. So, the ordinance itself regulating these types of uses are, it, it is on the books, so I thought I'd just quickly highlight what those are. We've defined all of these uses, uh, brewery, a brew pub, cocktail room, distillery, taproom, and winery, all specifically defined within the code. We have minimum parking regulations for each of these uses. Taprooms and cocktail rooms need to have one space per 40 square feet of gross floor area, so that the taproom, that would be for the Wooden Hill. A cocktail room is defined as the area where, um, things that are made in the distillery are served to the public, so it's kind of that, where the public would gather, so that parking regulation would be similar to a taproom. The, where the actual brewery or distillery is located, it's more of an industrial use, one space per 1,000 square feet. Um, one thing that did come up back in 2015 and 16 was a concern over, um, serving alcohol without food. So, we did put in to the ordinance where you could have a food truck, as long as there's no restaurant within 500 feet, and because these uses are all allowed in the industrial park, there's really no restaurants down there. Um, so that would be the case, um, with this site, with, uh, with this ordinance as well. There's also a number of other regulations. A liquor license would be required, um, that would be public hearing held by the city council for these types of uses. Uh, they need to conform to noise, vibration, dust, dirt, smoke, odor, glare, and liquid waste. Some of the details of those are provided in your packet, I won't go into those in detail, but they do need to, to meet minimum standards in that regard. We talked about parking. Uh, hours of operation, that's regulated through the liquor license. Um, no outside storage is permitted. You may recall when we looked at this four or five years ago, when we did a, a little tour of some of these other uses, we did note that there was a number of them that had outside storage problems, so we wanted to specifically prohibit that. And then, uh, they need to conform to all lighting standards as well. So, in conclusion, again, um, the uses already allowed within our industrial districts would be expanded to that POD Two district that's all, already located adjacent to our industrial parks. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance that's before the planning commission, so your recommendation would be for the city council to consider and approve. And with that, I can stand for any questions. Also, Eric Anderson, the applicant, uh, is here to answer any questions as well.
Carrie, do any members of the planning commission have questions? Kerry, do any members of the Planning Commission have questions? Well, okay, we have questions. I saw Sheila first. Sheila, why don't you kick us off?
Okay. I have a clarification question, Kerry, regarding the 500 feet for a food truck. So what you're saying is that if the taproom opens and there's not a restaurant within 500 feet, then you're required to have a food truck, and that means you're going to have food with the alcohol. Is that right?
You're not required to have a food truck, but you have the opportunity to bring in food trucks on occasion.
Okay.
At Wooden Hill, it's not a full-blown brew pub restaurant. They do warm up hot dogs, hamburgers, that kind of thing, so they don't bring in food trucks. But initially, when they went in, they were initially thinking about not providing the food, and providing a food truck was an option for them. They didn't go that direction, but...
So if you don't have any food at all, you need to have a food truck?
You don't have to, it's just the opportunity is there.
Okay. Okay. So there's no requirement that you do any kind of sales in addition to the alcohol? I noted in the packet, you had some examples from Excelsior and Hopkins and such, that, you know, a certain percentage of floor space had to be devoted to other types of sales, right? So under this provision, there would be no other requirement that sales, a percentage of sales, come from anything else? Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we don't have a regulation on that.
Whether it's food or otherwise. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
I think I saw Jerry, I believe you also had some questions?
Yeah, question for Kerry. Is outdoor dining or outdoor use permitted in these facilities?
It would be permitted as an accessory use, kind of similar to a restaurant. We don't require additional parking for outside seating. I believe Wooden Hill does have some outside seating right in front of their store. Not sure if they've put them in in the back, I don't believe so, but that would be allowed as a permitted accessory use.
And I think you mentioned, Wooden Hill was the first operation of this sort to go in, in the city?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
First-in only right now.
Right, thank you.
Questions also? All yours, Kate.
I have a question.
Thank you. So if through our work on the Planning Commission, Kerry, we change any parking requirements, will that cascade to all amendments like this as well?
So if we were to change parking regulations, let's say we made it one parking stall per 20 square feet, this use would be grandfathered in, but any new use that would be proposed within the city would have to conform to the new ordinance. So we wouldn't go back and require existing facilities to come in compliance with the new ordinance.
And I was kind of asking for the other way. I'm not sure if we'll get more stringent on the number of stalls required, but I would assume that that would still apply, that whatever is in place when something is approved is kind of what they need to go forward with, and if we change parking before we're actually reviewing any type of parking variance or approval for a new brew pub or whatever, whatever is in place at the time is what we align to.
Yeah, that's a good point. So let's say we went the other way and said you only needed one space per 80 square feet or 100. So they could come into compliance with, they could still comply with the ordinance, but they could create additional green space or provide a better outdoor seating environment. That would be made available to them if they so chose.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Kate. Hey, Jerry, did you have further questions? I'm sorry if I misunderstood. You're good? Okay, thanks. Does anyone else have any other questions? Lou?
Yeah. Just a question about the food truck thing. So they can have food trucks there if there's no restaurant within 500 feet, and we're presuming there won't be. If we look at some of those areas getting redeveloped in the future, and becoming, say, a little more mixed use or something, and say a restaurant comes in, if they've been having a food truck for five years or whatever, and then a restaurant moves in, does that mean within 500 feet? Is this retroactive, or they'd not be able to have food trucks anymore?
I think they would not be able to have a food truck unless they were to come in and ask for a variance from that provision.
Hey, Kerry, I recall the City Council debated this, it was, they would be grandfathered into allowing the food truck. I recall Mary Brenda making that comment like that, but I think that's what's reflected in the ordinance.
You know, I do recall we did have that discussion. I'm going to quick look at the ordinance here and see if that's the way it's written. Go ahead if you have other questions.
Anyone else have any other questions? I had a couple of questions. Kerry, what's the difference between POD 1 and POD 2? Just location, or are there other differences between POD 1 and POD 2?
It's really more about location. Thinking on the standards, they're pretty much the same.
And then, what were the policy, what was the thinking behind why not letting these people have onsite food? People that have distilleries, taprooms, wineries, serving onsite food. Was there a policy reason behind that?
Yeah, the council talked about, they wanted, rather than just going to a place where all you're doing is drinking, they wanted to provide food in addition to just the serving of the alcohol.
Yeah.
And as I'm looking at the code, Commissioner Thorson is exactly right. We did write it in specifically into the ordinance that says if a restaurant does open, that they can continue the food truck operation. So good catch.
So, I mean, like I think about brew pubs I've been to elsewhere in the country, for example, and some of the cool ones have some really neat food, too, as well as their own brew. I mean, it seems like, would our ordinance allow that to actually be a restaurant with its own brew, you know, brews, or it would?
That would. That would be considered the brew pub, fall into that brew pub category.
Okay, okay. So they could have a full-service restaurant in their own kitchen?
They could.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Kerry. Does anyone else have any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to give a presentation about why you're bringing this forward?
Sure. Good evening. My name is, well, first, thank you to the Chair and the Commissioners. My name is Eric Anderson, and I'm a partner with City Center Realty Partners and a resident of Edina. We acquired the former Regis buildings in December of 2019. Unfortunately, Regis made the decision to relocate out of Edina and into Minneapolis. They leased back most of the project through May of 2020. They have now vacated, and most of the project is vacant at this point. We have begun renovations to the point of the renovations to try and attract tenants to come back to the building, and we think that the distillery would provide us an opportunity to provide a unique amenity to both our tenants and the community. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do any members of the Commission have questions for the applicant? I have one, I guess. And I just went out of my mind, I was trying to count how many I am. Perhaps I have a comment. Do you have some, do you have an opportunity in mind, or is this just more of a general strategy, business strategy for you?
Now, we have a specific opportunity in mind. It's an existing distillery that's located in a different community right now. I'd love to tell you exactly what it is, but because we haven't signed a lease with them yet, I can't do that. And the lease agreement is contingent upon, you know, our getting a variance to do that here. But it's something that I, as a resident of Edina, would be very excited about, having a distillery move from a different community into our community, and one that I think is real high-quality, high-product distillery as well.
Thank you. Does anyone else, any other members of the Planning Commission have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, now we'll go into our public hearing portion, and I'll give my little presentation. So this is a public hearing, and that allows members of the public to call in with comments. You have up to three minutes to speak. Staff will let you know when you're approaching three minutes. If you'd like to call in, please dial 1-800-374-0221. Conference ID 6037966. Press *1, you'll load in a queue. If it's busy, just call back in a moment. You know, so with that said, we'll just wait a moment to see if anyone calls in at the queues fill.
Commissioners, we do not currently have anyone on the call. As before, I would recommend that you wait a minute or so before moving on, as there is a slight delay in the broadcast.
Very good. Thank you. You know, during this time, if any other Commissioners have questions, just... So I was thinking today, in a normal summer, you'd be, you'd drive to work, park your car outside, and stay indoors at your office and work all day, then you'd go back outside at the end of the day, and you'd be dreading touching your steering wheel. So I think a lot of us are not having to deal with that this summer.
So Ian, I went into the office today and just, I hadn't been in a beat, and I parked outside, and I really regretted it when I walked out this afternoon, like not even remembering that we're in the middle of summer.
One upside, one of a few. So Jennifer, has that been enough time?
I think so. Thank you for your patience.
All right, why don't we close the public hearing, if I could get a motion, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second. Commissioner Thorson, motion. Commissioner Agnew, second. Liz, could you do a roll of vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. So now it's time for Planning Commission discussion. If you have any further questions, you may ask them. If you have any comments, please share, and this will also be the time, if anyone has a motion, but I'd like to get a few comments or questions first. Jerry, would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Ian. Well, I thought, to me, the most important point was Kerry's comment that we had approved the Wooden Hill one with a lot of, well, you know, it's sort of like, let's see how this, well, not see how it goes, but you know, this was kind of the test case, and there have been no issues, no problems. I think it's been a successful operation, and I think it's really well-regulated and described and provided for by, you know, city oversight, you know, from the liquor license side to, you know, to the ordinance. So I think the city went about this in a kind of a careful, methodical way, and I think there's nothing like having a good experiences and facts to sort of go forward. And that's how I see it, is that it did work, and there should be no concern that this isn't a good use of this property. So that's my take.
Any other Commissioners? Kate?
I support this amendment for a couple of reasons. All of these locations are adjacent to those planned industrial zones, and none have adjacency to a residential area. So I think that that kind of really is following with the spirit of how these zones are laid out. Additionally, a liquor license would still be required, which would govern the operating hours and still give, you know, the city that ability to evaluate specific projects. So because of that, I do support this amendment.
Any other Commissioners with comments, questions?
I had just a couple. One is, I like the location of it. I think it'll be a real benefit to that area. There's, if you work over there, and obviously not many people are going to offices today, but hopefully people will be resuming going to offices sooner. I think, you know, a while ago, we thought it was going to come up really soon, now we think it's going to be forever until we get back to offices. It's probably going to be, it was longer than we thought a couple months ago, but it's probably going to be, might be sooner than we think now, I'm hopeful. But whenever it happens, I think that people are going to, the people officer are going to enjoy having this kind of option in the neighborhood of a place to go to. Second, I didn't think about this until the applicant spoke, but I've been to a distillery in a neighboring community that's owned by Edina residents, and I don't know what it is, but if that's the one that's coming, that would really be a nice thing to have in that location. It was just a really great, very, almost scientifically interesting facility, doing very, I mean, so I think it'd be a nice benefit to the community. If it's not that one, I suspect that knowing that, you know, the applicant intends to bring in a different one that's very high-quality. So I think this will be a nice benefit to that location.
Does anyone else have any comments, questions, motions?
I move approval of the zoning ordinance amendment.
I'd second.
All right, Commissioner Thorson, motion. Commissioner Agnew, second. Liz, could you do a roll vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. Well, thank you, everyone, and good luck to the applicant. I believe this goes to the Consuls soon, or Consuls, my family tells me it's pronounced. But thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to our third public hearing of the evening, and this is for a conditional use permit variances for 4425 Valley View Road. And once again, Community Development Director Kerry Teague will present for the city.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. Can you see the PowerPoint there?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this property is located in the Valley View Wooddale area, on the south side of Valley View, 4425 Valley View. This is the old and now vacant New Horizon Daycare Facility. Note that the property to the south is city-owned, it's a wetland with trees surrounding it, kind of gives the appearance, the site is a little bit larger from the rear and provides some screening, and screening from the single-family homes... screening and um, screening from the single-family homes to the south. The site sits high compared to the wetland here, which sits, uh, low. The applicant did go through sketch plan review. Was generally well-received at both Planning Commission and City Council, so only a few changes have been made. You recall, we talked about the boulevard-style sidewalk. They've included that. At the time of sketch plan, we were contemplating a shared drive. Um, currently, the driveway for the apartment to the east is actually located on the subject property. Um, they're in the process of, um, a, a new owner, um, taking over this site and they are looking at moving the driveway off of the subject property and on to their property. That doesn't rule out the possibility of maybe in the future, they would do a shared drive. But for now, they have, the applicant has revised the application and the driveway is located just on their property. Here's a look at the building that we looked at at sketch plan. Note the, the driveway, the sidewalk was on the street. And this is a look at the proposal. Again, now it is a boulevard-style sidewalk. There are still twenty-one units proposed here. They would be apartments. Another view. This is a look uh, at the project from the back. Access to the garage is off of the back. There's a couple of um, overflow parking stalls in the back that would be used for guest parking. We did receive some feedback on Better Together and I believe a phone-in um, questions about guest parking. So these spaces would be available and guest parking is also available underneath the building. The building itself would be, uh, made of brick and stone with lap siding. The applicant will go into this in a little more detail. So what's required here is a conditional use permit to allow the residential uses within a commercial zoning district. Uh, building height variance from two stories to three stories. With the small area plan for this area, it was talked about four stories for all the uses south of Valley View Road, and we'll take a look at a graphic here in a minute. Uh, front setback variances from thirty-six feet. The setback setbacks are based on the height of the building and the building height is thirty-six feet in this case. Floor area ratio, um, variance and a drive aisle setback variance from ten feet to zero feet. So here is the, uh, the outline of the small area plan. The site we're looking at is right here. And the boxes with the numbers, that indicates the recommended height. So as you can see, it's four stories on the south side of Valley View. So here is a site plan. So this is the new driveway that would come in. Staff is recommending that if there is no shared driveway, that rather than having it a zero lot line, they shift it in two or three feet to provide some separation of that property to the east. The applicant is agreeable to that. Um, it's also a zero setback on the, along the south lot line, but given that, um, the wetland and city-owned property to the south, that setback, um, seems reasonable. This is a look at the grading plan. We also did receive feedback again from Better Together and a phone-in comment about concerns about drainage. So the site generally does drain to the south. They are putting in an underground uh, underground stormwater system located here. There is a pipe that would allow uh, drainage to flow from the site into, uh, that wetland. But it is treated, filtered, um, and is controlled, so it's not a, a steady stream out into the wetland. It, it's slowed down and, um, released that way. Engineering has reviewed the project and it's also subject to the watershed district approval as well. Just a quick look at the setback and the, uh, the requirements that I mentioned where we're, uh, variances are, uh, being requested. The, uh, site, twenty-three parking sta, spaces are required. They're providing thirty-two here, so it is, um, there is enough parking. So primary issues are the variances and is the conditional use permit justified? Uh, staff believes that they are. Practical difficulty here is the small size of the lot and odd shape. Um, we couldn't fit a three-story building on the site, given a thirty-six-foot setback on all sides um, to meet all the required setbacks without the need for a variance. As I mentioned, the site does appear larger due to that wetland to the south. Uh, the, uh, limited building pad also compromises the area for drive aisle setbacks. The zoning ordinance does, within the planned commercial district, encourage buildings to be moved up to the street, um, provides additional justification for the variance as well. As long as they're creating an active pedestrian streetscape, which is proposed here again with the improvement to the sidewalk in front with the boulevard style. So again, here you can see that city-owned property to the south. Um, that shared driveway in this location here. The proposed height is reasonable in that it's actually one story less than what's recommended in the small area plan. And the site is well-screened by existing veget, vegetation, uh, vegetation uh, to the single-family homes to the south. Uh, we also believe that the conditional use permit criteria is met. There was a, uh, traffic study that was done by, um, uh, Wank Associates. Ed Terhar, I believe, is on the call with us. I didn't notice him at the beginning, but I hopefully he, he's with us to answer any questions in that regard. The, the study, okay, thanks. The study does, uh, con, um, there is a finding in the study that actually this project would generate less traffic than the daycare. Um, so traffic is not a concern in this case. So with that, staff is recommending, uh, approval of the conditional use permit and variances, uh, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff memo. With that, I will stop there and answer any questions.
Thank you, Kerry. Do any members of the planning commission have questions for, uh, Community Development Director Teague? Sheila, please start.
Thank you. Uh, Kerry, there was a, a question that came in from Better Together. Um, you had mentioned a couple of them, but um, in addition, the, um, person was interested in, in confirming the access, you know, for like, uh, grocery delivery, um, Amazon deliveries, people moving in and out, and just confirming that they weren't going to be doing that on Valley View, but there was a dedicated space to do that. And I wonder if, uh, you can address that.
Yeah, they could do that in the back a, as well. Um, potentially, you know, for those quick pull in, I'm not sure if there's parking allowed on Valley View. I don't know, recall off the top of my head. I don't believe so. So they would have to pull in to the back, um, to, to make those deliveries as well.
Uh, there was also, um, stormwater management and guest parking, but I think you addressed both of those. Um, a question also in addition to that is the bus stop and how that is envisioned and, and maybe that's a question for Mr. DeVos as well. Um, I guess there was interest in, in having the transportation be integrated, but then there was also some concern that if that intersection started getting busy, um, then it might get congested and, you know, maybe not be as safe. So I wonder if, if either you or Mr. DeVos could talk about that.
Yes, perhaps, um, the applicant, Mr. DeVos can. Again, with this, this is actually generating less traffic and potentially the people that live in the facility might ride the bus, having bus stops basically right outside their door. Um, if Mr. DeVos would like to add to that.
Yes. Uh, good evening. I'm Dean DeVos, five zero nine, five zero zero nine Ridge Road, Edina, Minnesota. Nice to, uh, see everyone again, uh, through the phone. We did consider the bus stop. The trick is, it's, it's, you know, obviously MTC and they have their own rules and regs. In Edina, uh, uh, they're not really prone for bus shelters or such structures, and that's all separate process. So as you go in the process, we will contact them to see if they have an interest in upgrading, providing a shelter, bench or anything. They generally don't. But with the boulevard, we have the ability to incorporate it. But until we go through that process, we just don't know.
Give us Mr. DeVos. Does anyone, do any other commissioners have questions for staff? Jerry?
Um, Kerry, the stormwater plan, so they're capturing the stormwater in some sort of like, um, cylinders or, or some sort of container storage, which then empties into the city-owned. I assume that household has, so there's a controlled release there and then the city pond, I assume, has a is controlling their release then too. So I mean, it's, it's not just, there's got to be an outlet, I assume, on that city pond?
Yeah, that I don't know. Um, I don't believe the engineering memo talked about that. Engineering didn't express any concerns about capacity in that pond. Um, it, it can't travel at a rate faster than what it does now. Um, it's probably being filtered out more than it is today.
Maybe there is some, I mean, I can see controlling, filling that pond up, but I would think there should be some release there. But, okay, I'm, if they've looked at it, I'm sure, I mean, that's, that would have been an important consideration. So, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Uh, Mr. DeVos, now you can give us your, your whole pitch if you want to share about the project.
Okay, I'll keep it short and sweet, but thank you very much. So essentially, this is a boutique apartment project, uh, larger units uh, than normal, really meant for long-term renters. Uh, more of what I call legacy renters, renters, in which really leases may end up being three to ten years. It's similar to the project we worked on in Fifty-third and Ewing, which is behind the Reso. So it's same uh, basis that the idea is that it caters towards Edina residents who finally want to sell their house and stay in the community. And this really gives them the option to do that. We found unfortunately, a lot of requests of residents wanting this type of housing, this type of living. By code, we have thirty-two parking spaces, but we've created a series of tandem, so we actually have fifty parking spaces below the building. So we can handle the guest parking, but really the resident, residential, uh, demand is part of it. A hundred percent of our parking is covered, so there is no surface law with the building with the idea that uh, everything is below grade. Thus, the idea of preserving the site and keeping the site green and, and all its various aspects, uh, uh, on that. We followed the small area plan. Uh, our neighborhood meeting was very successful because of that and the residents were in, the RedSat attended were in support of this project. They thought it was a nice fulfillment of the, uh, guidelines that had, uh, uh, put forth, uh, on the project on that basis. We have activated the street because the units, uh, facing Valley View are all have front porches and individual entries that really emphasize a townhouse-like feel. So the thought is they have the ability to access the street and the front yard, so it's it's not an anonymous apartment building, but has that kind of a connection activity to the street, which we thought is a really big deal and really uh, enlivenes the building. Our landscape plan is all going to be natural materials, very little sod, so it blends in with the trees and, uh, scales with the element. We're using a combination of lap siding and brick. Uh, and wood cornices to give the building a scale and a detail. And now the thing we've done is make, it develops, it goes in and out, so it has a townhouse-like feel uh, as opposed to just a, an apartment. We've created rooftop deck that sits in the far northwestern side of the building, so it's away from any residence, anything else in terms of that. So we really endeavored to create a building that has a, a scale, a boutique scale, an asset to the community, uh, in terms of people's interests, activating the street, uh, covered a hundred percent of the parking. Did manage the stormwater, which does go through a series of filtration takes. That lake does have an outlet that goes, the lake towards Caneely actually winds through sort of lake, so it is, it is a lake that has uh, access out. The driveway does also serve for deliveries on that, in terms of the other question. And it's a nice, uh, building that'll have a small party room, community space and that kind of activity. So we develop a sense of community with the building and our hope is to have long-time residents, uh, within the city. So I'll conclude right there and, uh, stand for questions. So thank you.
DeVos, do any planning commissioners have any further questions for the applicant? Sheila?
Um, thank you. I am interested in, um, your, the number of floors. You chose three floors. Um, currently, two is, it's zone for two, but the small area plan gives a nod to four. Um, you know, there's no, there's no right answer, but so often we have discussions around height and density. So it's interesting that here we have a case where, um, it's, it seems like there, there would have been an opening to do four. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on why you made this three instead of four.
So there's, uh, several reasons. Part of it was personal judgment uh, in part of it's marks. I'll just go through several reasons. Part of it is based on the scale of the neighborhood. Uh, condominium that's built to our north of three stories. So we thought scaling with that was sort of appropriate and mixed and had a good blend with that. Part of it was mark of the building. Keep the building a reasonably small number of units. Twenty-one larger units as opposed to thirty-four large units. Another factor was parking. We want to make sure we didn't put too much density across the parts of the overpark. Because part of the idea of appealing to Edina residents is most of, uh, homeowners, uh, have two cars. Most of our future rentals have two cars. So we want to make sure we had an inventory that satisfies that plus a little bit of extra. So that was, uh, really, uh, critical. If we went for the extra story, uh, we believe that would have put us out of, uh, balance in terms of what we think is the parking, that demand. Where, you know, a lot of codes state one for one, Edina stated for that, we thought we'd go stronger on the parking. Uh, provide larger units, keep the building at a, a scale that fits the marketplace of a boutique, uh, apartment building and a scale that really established what the condominiums to our north did, so it had a nice balance to it. Because that extra story might have been nice. We just thought it would make it too large of a project. Plus, it allowed us to work in a roof deck as part of it as many within the building. So that was a a basic logic about why the size we did. You know, four was great, but we thought it wasn't appropriate for this type of project.
Excuse me, that was interesting. Thank you. Any further questions, Sheila or anyone else?
I have a question.
Lou.
Yeah, so, uh, in terms of deliveries, you said that the deliveries would be, um, through the driveway into the back of the building. So is there a package room or something down there that's easily accessible or?
Yeah, there's an access to the garage in there. There's also the package room in front of, off the lobby, because long-term deliveries will probably use the driveway. But it'll be a frontview, short-term are going to pull in front, you know, along, uh, Valley View and bring it into the, uh, uh, lobby area. So it's going to end up being a combination of both. Because if you know, delivery, delivery trucks like uh, Amazon and so forth, it's quick in and out and they'll just pull up to front lobby. For more longer-term elements, the driveway garage will be used. So it's going to be a combination of both. Really, some using the street and some, uh, not. So that's going to be how it's, uh, going to work. So Wooddale, they can long park. Uh, the, uh, drive into the garage, they can long park. And then obviously for short-term Valley View.
All right, because my concern, um, I mean, you're probably familiar, but the city has you know, marked green bicycle lanes um, in that area. And they're not, they're not protected and they're not even full. I mean, the cars can drive in them and everything. And so my concern is that if, if people are riding their bikes along there, that a delivery truck, even if it's there for just a few minutes, is forcing cyclists out into traffic, you know, which I think is kind of a dangerous thing to do. So I'm a little concerned about that. I think that, um, you know, I mean, it's partly the city's fault. There should be better protected cycle lanes there, but, um, I think, uh, I don't know, I'm a little concerned about that. Um,
Yeah, and yeah, I know what you're saying. It just, but I just want to be honest about the nature of delivery drivers. They're going to take the fastest quickest in and out. So obviously, we'll encourage you to use a driver, encourage you with Wooddale, but I don't want to ruin it when staying. Some will do that also.
Right, but I mean, a cyclist isn't going to wait two minutes for a, a delivery to happen, right? Right, but I mean, a cyclist isn't going to wait two minutes for a delivery to happen, right? So, that's sort of, a car certainly wouldn't. So a cyclist isn't going to either. I have another question. I can't think of it. So I guess I'll, that's good for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Come back to you, Lou. Do, do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? So I, I have a question for Mr. De Volus, and this could be for staff too, is, you know, I, I, I share some of the concerns that were raised by the resident and by Commissioner Miranda regarding blocking that lane for deliveries, blocking that bicycle. I mean, what, what can be done to prevent that from happening?
Part of it, I'll, I'll answer, I'll say, Kerry, part of it is instructions to the drivers. And that's probably what should be, the building, please use the driveway. That's going to be the method to really encourage that. Because normally, the delivery routes are by the same drivers, same methods. So they'll learn the rules of each individual building and that'll be the process to do that. But, you know, like I said, I just wanted to be honest. So it'll be a lot of drivers that are going to do it because they're based on speed, time, and how many packages they deliver. So but that's where we tend to manage that situation. Kerry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head if parking is available right out in front of the building on, on Valley View. If there's no parking allowed, if someone stops there, you know, is that a violation? Because in a sense, they're parking there short-term. We can get that clarified with engineering before it goes to council.
Well, yeah, and I think the question, I mean, it's a three-lane road with a, with a turn lane in the center and bike lanes on each side and Lou's concern is, is, is real. It's not just theoretical. Because sometimes there are cars or particularly trucks or work trucks that'll pull over and turn their flashers on and block the bike lane. And then you got bikers going out into the middle of the road. And because it's a three-lane road with a turn lane in the center, it's confusing to drivers. And it's a busy road. So it's, it's at best frustrating to people and at worst, dangerous. So I think the question isn't, it shouldn't stop at whether there's parking or not, because there definitely, I don't know how there could be because it's a bike lane. But what can be done to prevent drivers from just saving a minute out of their day by stopping and turning their blinkers on?
Sure, I could add to that. As a conditionally permitted use, you could, you could add a condition, condition nine, that would state no parking in front of the building.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, well, that's, thank you, Kerry. The commission can review that. Does anyone else, do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll move to public hearing. We'll have a chance, we obviously have a chance. Thank you, Mr. De Volus. So if you want to participate in the public hearing, please dial one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Conference ID six zero three seven nine six six. Press star one to be placed into queue. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Staff will, if they can, prompt you when you're at two minutes and thirty seconds, and they will let you know when you're at three. We have received comments on this. As you can tell, we've been discussing the comments and voicemails we've received. So we ask if you do call in, that you bring up issues that we haven't already considered. And, you know, if you provide a feedback, obviously, you know, we've listened to that. So we'll take a moment, let, you know, because we're on a tape delay, we'll take a moment, just see, let, not a tape delay, but live delay, we'll let, see if calls load. Let's turn over to the city communication department.
Karen Hemmerow, I'm feeling very, very lonely tonight. I do not have any callers yet. But again, I urge you to hang on for a minute or so as there is that delay in the live broadcast.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Commissioners, I think it's safe for you to move on at this point.
Thank you, Jennifer. Could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Strauss, second by Commissioner Berube. Liz, could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda? Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau?
Aye, and is Todd on? Oh, there.
Sorry. Single parenting.
We, we need, we need you to function, Todd.
I have a purpose.
There was a motion to approve. Are you in favor or against?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. So that, that closes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting for this matter. And so now we have, it's a planning commission opportunity to ask further questions, to have further discussion, or I should kick off the discussion and perhaps after a moment of questions and discussions, then we, if we could consider a motion. I'm wondering if any commissioners have any comments or further questions first, though. Jerry?
Yeah, just, you know, I liked this project in sketch and, and was had very good feelings about it. The I, and I liked the new renderings. I, I like it more. I think what I thought was most important to me, which was confirmed, was the, was the acceptance, the approval, the, the support from those people involved in the small area plan. And I know there were a couple of members who tripped in on, who commented. And, and then Mr. De Volus's comments about working with that group and, and their support of, and to me that, you know, that, that, that was, that was kind of the biggest, I think, reason why I really support this. Because of the, 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 the work with the, the small area plan group and their, you know, their hopes and, and their vision. And I, I think this project will be a very good for this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any comments or other questions?
So.
Lou?
I have a comment. I, I just want to say, pre to my prior comment, a question about deliveries. This is sort of a, so I, I mean, I love the project. I think it's a, it's a great idea. Fits the neighborhood, fits the small area plan perfectly. It's just the kind of building I think that we wanted in that, in that neighborhood, in that location. But I think it highlights what, and I've mentioned this before, what we're missing in our planning process, which is that, you know, we're, we're accepting more density in these areas because we want more vitality, we want more things to do, we want more people within our, in our neighborhood nodes. And, but when we do that, if we just leave the transportation infrastructure the way it is, then we introduce more conflict. And so what's happening here, for example, this is actually pretty complicated because it's happening, there, there's currently a six bus, a, a leg of the six bus that goes up Wooddale. And it's not terribly frequent, but people use it and people, I know of at least one person who moved into the neighborhood and depends on that. But that is probably either being reduced or going away when the E-line comes in, which will go along France Avenue. And that's not that far away. It's probably less than a mile away, but but we don't want people driving a mile to take the bus. That kind of defeats the whole purpose. So the city put in this beautiful new multi-use lane on Sixty Second Street. And I just went by there the other day to, to look at it. And it's, and it's really nice. But again, at, at, once you get to Valley View, it's sort of this old-fashioned green lane that, that from my time on the Transportation Commission, my understanding is that that is not legal to put in anymore. It was experimental at the time. But they've decided that sharing a lane between cars and bikes and just painting it green is not a good idea. So so we couldn't put that in today if we wanted to do it. So we're, we're left with a situation where we're building more density in this neighborhood. We want these walkable, bikeable neighborhoods. But if there's a delivery vehicle parked there, even temporarily, that makes it really dangerous for cyclists. And I think that's something, and I don't think that's necessarily the fault of the developer. I'm not trying to say that's the fault there, but I think it's a lack of planning that the city has in terms of making our, our, our nodes denser and not addressing the transportation changes that are required to make them work. So I'm very much in favor of this project. I think it's a great project. Done really well. But I think we're going to have a conflict here and I, I wouldn't want to be you know, known for approving this and having someone killed on a bicycle in this area.
Do any other commissioners have comments? I, 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 as you probably guessed, I share Lou's comments for the most part. I would also add to that, though, that I, I'm concerned this, the delivery truck parks on the street there, that'll cause traffic issues too, and there'll be traffic dissatisfaction. So I think it's important that we figure out a solution to. Again, I, I think Lou really hit it. It's, it's not the developers' fault for thinking for, for the, the situation occurred. But I think it is something that we do need to solve. I'm grateful for this, the resident comment to bring it to our attention. So I think we need to figure out a way to make sure that there are no trucks on the street there or deliveries. Anyone else have any comments or further questions?
I, I, I would echo what's already been said. I think this is a great project. It fits the neighborhood really well. It seems that it's aligned with just what they were looking for in the small area plan. So I'd be an advocate for it. That being said, I think Commissioner Miranda has really great points that need to be taken seriously. And I don't know how we can, I don't, I don't know exactly what the process is for making sure that this remains a safe area for pedestrians, bikers, you know, cars. I'm hoping that it doesn't prohibit us from approving what's really a great project. So I'll, I'll just, I'll just stop there. You know, I think it's important that it's, we address it and do what we can. It sort of feels like maybe it's more of a transportation issue than it is a planning commission issue. Because I, I would hate to see, you know, to have a problem approving this based on that. But that being said, I don't want to, you know, in any way, say that that's not an important issue.
Do any other commissioners have any comments? I mean, Kerry, can we put it regarding this transportation issue, could we put it like that you suggested doing a ninth? They need to say, you know, come up with, you know, plans to prevent on-street you know, temporary parking. I mean, can, can there just be signs that say, you know, all deliveries must go in back, no deliveries here, that sort of thing? I mean, is that something the transportation department would take care of? We would just say this we want to have accomplished and so on and so on.
Yeah, so you could add the condition that it be posted, no parking, no deliveries in front of this building. In terms of the entire network, like Commissioner Miranda was talking about, that is more of a transportation commission issue. But we could, we can add conditions to try to make at least this segment more safe. And perhaps it's, it could be a recommendation for all along that segment that the city posts that type of signage.
Yeah, it's funny. I think a lot of the other properties have kind of circular drives that entice the deliveries to pull in in the front. I think a lot of the other properties have that. I'm not sure of the one across the street from you know, on the other, on, on, on the, on the west side of Wooddale. Across the street from the strip mall. I can't remember. I think that one might be closer to the street, but that, that's, those are wise comments. Does any, do any other commissioners have any further comments or questions or motions?
I just wanted a final comment here.
Sure.
tying together what we've said, yeah. So I voted against the, the apartments that called the Lorient, which is called the forty-five-hundred France Apartments at the time because of these transportation issues, because I was on the small area plan working group and what got us to agree to the ultimate decision on density and whatever was, was safety and that, that was a, a big issue. I wasn't on this small area plan, but I think, so, so I voted against that because I thought the city needed to do more and the city has not done more. And, but I still, but I love the project. The project is coming close to completion and I wanted to vote for it because I thought it was a great project. But I, I just don't think that the roads are any safer than they were before. So I, I will say that I'm not going to vote against this because of that reason. But I think it's important to, to say that, that, you know, if you read any article about Amazon drivers and how they're paid and treated and whatever, and the time they have to work on and how they urinate in bottles because they don't have enough time to go to the bathroom, they're not going to park in the back if there's a sign there. So I, I think signage, I don't think signage is the point. I, I think, I don't know if we can just say something to the city council saying, you need to address this problem somehow. That would be fine by me, just to know that, that we have made it very, very clear that there needs to be some sort of protected bike facility here so that it's physically impossible to park there. I know we're not the Transportation Commission. We're not going to decide how that happens or make recommendations on that or anything. But I think as a planning commission, you know, and the tie-in between planning and transportation, we have to say we want these, these small area nodes that follow our small area plans, but there's also a transportation component that we're not addressing here. And I think this project just highlights how problematic that can be. That just, just the fact that, you know, they don't want to go around the corner and they won't. You know, they'll stop right there. Happens all the time. There's pictures, you know, all over the internet of drivers stopping in the middle of, of driving lanes for cars. And yeah, it's more dangerous for motorists too. So I, I, what I want is something that would just say, you know, we think, we agree with this plan, but we think that there needs to be a protected bicycle facility of some sort to be determined by the Transportation Commission. Something along those lines.
May I make one comment? Is that okay?
Sure, Mr. De Volus.
Thank you. I used to be a member of the Transportation Committee. I'll just throw an idea because I, I hear this. One thing that may be an idea, the road right now is a continuous left turn, three-lane road. One idea that may solve the issue is there may be points where you say, look, we may eliminate that center lane, get it back to, to opposing lanes, which then leaves some breathing room on either curb, which could either be drop-off and/or parking and/or protected lane. Because you have a roadway that has a lot of width. And they made it easy for canoes left turn, but that may be the negotiable area that may help in the future, as you look at this, provide more long-term solutions to get at that problem. And maybe left turns only occur in certain major intersections where necessary. Otherwise, you go back to a, a two-lane opposing traffic to allow that to occur. So thank you for letting me sneak that in.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any comments, questions, motions?
I move to, I don't know how to phrase this. I don't usually make motions. I move to, uh, I don't know how to phrase this, I don't usually make motions. To accept it with the city's, with the, uh, planning department's recommendations. Um, and the ninth requirement that the city address, um, a dedicated safe bicycle path in front of this building. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I second that.
Carrie, let me ask you about that. That, I mean, I, I mean, it makes sense and I get where you're going. I'm just wondering if, if that's beyond the scope of the, I mean, uh, uh, scope of the matter. Because, yeah, Carrie, you please.
Was the added condition that the council address protecting the bike lane in front?
It doesn't have to literally, I mean, it's addressing safety of cyclists in front of this, this new development.
So to answer your question then, Ian, it, not sure that ties specifically to this development, unless the condition were that it be posted out front.
I mean, it seems like it's
We can certainly add that as a, as a condition. It, it's safe, but, um, you want to consider some suggestions on how they would go.
Let me ask it this way. Um, to me, a condition is something that the failure of which would mean that the, uh, that the project is not, has not met its requirements for approval. So with, with the idea of protecting the bike lane along Valley View in general, I, I don't think that the, if the council didn't act on that, let's just say in the next three years, that wouldn't affect the approval of this project. Right, Carrie?
Yeah, that's a good question because how, you know, their idea of addressing it may be different from yours unless there's something specific.
I, I, I think it's easier to tie the conditions to the project itself. I mean, we can make a recommendation.
Right.
Well, we have, we have transfer, we have, uh, transportation studies and, um, I guess I haven't been on a commission long enough to know if, you know, they require, you know, additional car lanes or turn lanes or, you know, those sort of things. If we can do that for cars, then why can't we do that for bicycles?
Um, well, it'd be related to the project itself and, and those are actually conditions. So if, if you're willing to say that, if, if we're making the recommendation that we would not approve the project, but for, uh, conditions one through eight being achieved and condition nine, condition nine being, um, protecting the bike lane along Valley View, well, then that, that's something I think we could go forward with. But otherwise I think it's just a recommendation.
I mean, I, I, I don't mind making it vague enough that we're not prescribing how it's done because there are multiple ways of doing it. You could, um, put in, you know, a curb or something. You could also widen the sidewalk as it's currently planned so that it's a multi-use path, uh, which is what's on 62nd Street. Um, so again, I don't want to prescribe necessarily what's done, but I want to make sure there's a, a protected facility that bicycles can use that will prevent a motorized vehicle from parking there or obstructing it.
Some physical, some physical action beyond a sign.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Are you, are you talking just about this property or the entirety of Valley View?
Well, I like it on all of Valley View, but I don't think we can require that, can we?
So if, if that's the intent, what I'm hearing is they need to build, build a space on the road to provide that. That's really the only way that you can ensure that a, a vehicle like that wouldn't park in that lane.
Well, like I said, the multi-use path, I mean, that's what's on 62nd Street. Um, and the, you know, the requirement here, I, I missed the first meeting when this was, um, presented, but, I mean, it sounds like they wanted, um, and, uh, Mr. DeVola's provided a, a boulevard-style sidewalk. Well, that provides extra space for, if you wanted to make that a multi-use path. So you would widen that, um, so there'd be less boulevard, but it would be something that bicycles would use. I mean, I went by there the other day and walked around there and took pictures and there were plenty of people biking and in fact, hardly anybody was using the bike lane, they were using the sidewalk because they felt more comfortable on it because it was safer. So, you know, so again, I don't want to prescribe whether the turn lane stays or whether they make a multi-use path or how they do it, but there has to be a protected bicycle facility.
As a, as a condition of approval? Something to protect the bike lane at least on this property? Along this property, that's what you're saying, Lou?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, that's, that's a fine motion. Uh, Kate, I believe you had seconded, do you still, as, as, as kind of clarified, do you still second?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion among the planning commission about that motion? So the motion is to prove it as drafted in the staff memo with the additional, with the addition of, uh, uh, additional condition of protecting the bike lane, some physical protection of the bike lane, at least in front of the property. Uh, any further discussion, I was, I'll call for a roll vote. Todd?
This, this is getting into the problem we've had in other stretch city diners where we have really nice facilities for one stretch and then it's, I mean, I think of France Avenue going through Southdale, right? I mean, there's sidewalks, there's boulevard sidewalks, there's sidewalks right against the highway, against the road. There's no sidewalks. So to me, it just seems like it's a piecemeal, you know, for this one stretch of, of that street doesn't solve that problem for any other stretches of, of the road and we start getting this real piecemeal approach to trying to solve this problem. So I, it just seems a little discon- you know, disconnected from the, the, the entire transportation system.
So, uh, there is a bike and pedestrian plan that was, uh, redone a couple of years ago. I was on that, um, committee and, um, Valley View is, is a planned bicycle facility. So if this would kickstart, you know, either the planning of that or something to, uh, get that started, I mean, something is planned along this road. I don't know what, what, uh, engineering has decided if anything that's going to go there, but I, I think, um, you know, something's going to go there eventually. So it's, it's part of the bike and pedestrian plan.
Yeah, sometimes you have to do piecemeal things before you get the whole two, I suppose. Just to, so, I didn't, what, any further?
So may I ask a clarification? Of, of the, uh, amendment?
Uh, sure, sure.
Is it, is it either the street and/or widening the sidewalk?
Lou? Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Is the, is to provide a protective, is it, is it either the street or widening the sidewalk? Any method to accomplish that, like a wider sidewalk in front of the building? Would that be an acceptable solution?
Yeah, as long as it meets the city standard for, uh, multi-use path. Okay.
Um, are there any, uh, so we have the motion in a second. Are there any further questions or comments?
Michael, do you want to say? Sorry to interrupt. Sorry, may Mike speak?
Mr. Chair, this is Michael Margulies. I'm, uh, our Development Services Coordinator for DGR and working with the, uh, developer, the owner. Um, I, I think this is a, an important issue and I really understand the uh, commissioner's concern on that and we share that. I'm, I'm sort of worried about this little bit of formal resurgence. I'm concerned to get closer to the condition over which the developer has no ability to control. Uh, the city can post signs, um, to stop deliveries. It's up to the city to enforce it. I, if, 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 um, if the, if the commissioner might, might reconsider approaches in a different manner, I think this is a really valid point. I think doing it as a condition, uh, instead of doing it as a separate motion uh, for a recommendation for the council to pay attention to, um, has the effect of drawing attention to this, of the city council's, uh, uh, attention to this without encumbering the development with a condition over which the developer has no control. We can't, we can't change your street. We can't post sign, we can post sign, we can't enforce this. We do have a delivery space in back. Um, but I think it's a problem that the city needs to resolve on its own timetable. And so I, I might ask the commissioners to consider separating this into a separate motion for the city, uh, council to, uh, to act on.
Thank you, Mr. Margulies. All right, so back to the commission. So does any commissioners have any, uh, I, I, by the way, just as a comment, I, I, depending on what, whatever happens in it, I, I, Mr. DeVola's, Mr. Margulies, that could be very, well, you've taken in your comments and obviously you can raise those issues to the, however we go, I mean, those will be things you'll bring up with the city council, uh, when you have an opportunity, depending on how this one plays out. But commissioners, do any commissioners have any further comments or questions? Or are we ready to vote on the resolution? Anyone else have any comments? All right, Liz, could you do a roll vote, please? So just to clarify, the motion is, and Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, approve it as defined by the city and then come up with some method of having a protected bike lane in front of this property. Is that fair, Lou?
Yes.
Okay. Liz, could you do a roll vote, uh, for this?
Absolutely. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Chair Numrav?
Uh, nay. So, but it does pass and so we'll go to the council. Uh, Carrie, when will this matter go to the city council?
This goes to the council July 21st.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Mr. DeVola's, Mr. Margulies, good luck. Thank you for your discussion this evening.
Thanks, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, planning commissioners, um, now we have a, a, a few other matters perhaps to discuss. Next item on our agenda is reports and recommendations. Uh, do, Carrie, I, I think I would go to you. I would, do you have any reports or recommendations?
I do not.
Uh, Lou, do you have any recommendations?
Well, I was having kittens, I'm going to get them on, hang on for a second.
Hi, Mr. Margulies, we can hear you. Mr. Margulies, could you mute your phone, please? Mute your line.
Um, we're gonna, we're gonna run and run, run it. We have to mute.
There you go. Okay. Uh, do anyone else have any reports or recommendations? I may, okay, so maybe we can talk
That's actually, that's a category we would fill in if we had an item. It's not an open-ended, if you have recommendations, bring them up now. That's something that we would coordinate before.
Thank you, Carrie. So that brings us to chair and member comments. Do any members have any comments? I don't have any comments other than thank everyone for the good discussion tonight. Um, oh, also, uh, and I'll forward this off to Carrie, you know, we, we currently have a work session scheduled for two weeks from now. Uh, Carrie, you, you and I need to talk about what we would talk about at that meeting. Um, also, uh, Carrie, I'm going to turn this over to you at staff comments, but I think there's a few things I'd like you to touch on in staff comments. One is the next step for the matters we talked about at our last work session and maybe give an update on the comp plan and anything else you'd like to share.
Yep, certainly, should I? Okay, I'll go ahead with that. So at our work session, we talked about the zoning ordinance amendment and bringing that forward to schedule a public hearing. So we have done that. It's not on your agenda tonight because of notification requirements for publication, all of that. But we will have those three changes to the zoning ordinance that we talked about at our work session. So that will be on your agenda for July 22nd. And the other item is the comprehensive plan. So as we talked about at our work session a couple of weeks ago, the Met Council did approve the city's plan. They did require some changes and clarifications in the plan. So what we're going to do is our goal is by next Monday, we would like to post a redlined version of the chapters that they required some changes to. That being the, the land use, the transportation, the water plan and the housing chapter. We thought we would post that on Better Together redlined version so it's clear the changes that were, um, required by the Met Council. We would include the, we received two incomplete letters from the Met Council that says, we're not going to consider your plan as complete until you do the following, and that's where those redlined changes come in. We had to make those changes in order for them to even consider our plan. We're going to post those letters in addition to the approval letter that the Met Council, Council drafted in approving our plan. And that did list some of the, the conditions there. Um, one of them being that they did increase our recommended, our goal for affordable housing units. Um, they did increase that. Um, so that, that's just an example of one of the changes. So the idea is to post all of that on Better Together by next Monday and then bring the, the final version to the city council for their approval. In a sense, what they're doing is putting the comprehensive plan into effect. And we would do that on their August 5th agenda. Um, but that's where we stand with the comprehensive plan. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else have anything further?
I do.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, back to, to the point of our, of contention tonight. And I'm thinking back to, um, the, when we approved the Caribou Coffee, um, at, uh, Interlock and, and Vernon. And, um, so I, I don't thi- I mean, I, I didn't look back, but I, I don't think we like required the developer to put in an extra car lane or anything, but, but there was a transportation study done and the city, I presume of its own volition, decided that they needed an extra turn lane there. Um, and so that, you know, I don't know if it was part of the proposal or just something that was just from the city that addressed an issue that was of concern in the transportation, um, report. Um, but you know, this is the same sort of thing where I think, I, again, I'm not saying the developer has to put in this infrastructure, but I think the city needs to come, the engineering department needs to come to the, uh, to these meetings with solutions for transportation problems that are non-car transportation problems. And I think this is a very clear example of something where we're creating a very dangerous situation because those drivers are absolutely going to park there. And yeah, they're going to have their flashes on and yeah, it's only going to be for five minutes, but no cyclist, whether it's a someone, a middle-aged man in Lycra or it's some young mother towing kids behind her or, you know, or senior going to, uh, you know, some business or something or the bus stop. Um, we, you know, our bike and pedestrian plan calls for all ages and abilities and we need, the city needs to proactively have solutions for issues like this that are, that are guaranteed to happen as we've become a city of, of mostly single-family homes with denser nodes. And we have to address these problems first in these denser nodes.
Thank you, Lou. I mean, I, maybe that's something we can think about and discuss further at a, uh, at a later work session too. And maybe we can, maybe Carrie, you could circle back with the Transportation Commission liaison and say this, this issue is coming up and it caused a lot of discussion. It spurred a lot of discussion. a lot of discussion. It spurred a lot of discussion.
That sounds like a work session topic with the transportation commission, you know, a joint session. Going back to that Caribou, there was the transportation study done in the Grandview District that talked about the expansion of that right-of-way. So that's where that came from. Your recommendation was actually for denial. I think it was unanimous, right, Todd? But the developer-
I pass that every day. I hate that Caribou. Oh, I hate it. Just twice a day. It pisses me. Good day, I don't want to work anymore, because then, less times for me to drive past and get irritated by it. So.
Right. But to protect these, these bike lanes like you're referring to, I'm not sure engineering can come up with a one-off solution for an individual project. That's where I think it needs to be more of a citywide discussion with the transportation commission.
Yep, absolutely.
I think for the Caribou also, the, the engineering department had been looking for an opportunity to build that extra turn lane before the Caribou project came up. And so they, they were almost happy to have this opportunity to tear up the site. So it was a little different order in how the thing was looked at.
Right. That's sort of my point, in that they're not doing that for bicycle infrastructure as we become denser.
That's, that's a good point. That's a good point. Anyone else? Anyway, well, that's adjournment. I, I, Carrie, remember, do we have to vote on adjournment? Kate remembers. Liz, could you do a roll vote for adjournment?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Chair Numrav?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.